It is 5:30 PM and I now call to order the Grand Island Public Schools Board of Education Hearing on July 10th, 2025. Notice of this meeting has been advertised in the Grand Island Independent, which is the district's designated method of giving notice of these meetings. We want those in attendance to know that copies of the Open Meetings Act are available at the entrance to the boardroom. If anyone in attendance is interested in addressing our board, you are welcome to do so. We simply request that you complete the appropriate form and turn it in to us so that you may be recognized during the request to address the board part of our meeting. If you have not already completed the form, please see the staff person outside the entrance to this room. Public comment is welcome. We do ask that no signs be brought into the boardroom. Mrs. Dibbert, would you please call the roll?
Mr. McFarland.
Present.
Mr. Hawley.
Here.
Mr. Garcia Mendez.
Present.
Mrs. Albers.
Here.
Mr. Sykes.
Here.
Mr. Barsnas.
Yes.
Mrs. Douglas.
Here.
Mrs. Goodman.
Okay. This evening, we are going to begin with a request to address the board regarding policy review for public input. This is one scan of public input on Policy 8820, Student Fees, and Public Policy 9110, Parental Access to Educational Practices. Any comments? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Well, technically, we have to.
Technically.
Dot the I, cross the T.
All right.
We need to officially go on record as saying that we have collected no fees and we've given no waivers for the last school year for student fees because we don't collect student fees. By statute, we're supposed to give you that information, so I think we've completed our statutory duty.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Okay, now, public input on Policy 9110, Parental Access to Educational Practices.
And I could share information. We're gonna cover this policy later. We're gonna cover this policy later, and since we didn't have anyone here to comment on it, I think we'll probably just hold off on that until we cover the other policies. Unless you wanna break things up. I can cover the policy now, and then we can have a break later on.
Seeing there being no public comment, this meeting is adjourned. Now, on to the regular board meeting. If I can get my computer to work. It is now 5:33 PM, and I now call to order the Grand Island Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. This is the July 20, excuse me, July 10, 2025 meeting. Notice of this meeting has been advertised in the Grand Island Daily Independent, which is the district's designated method of giving notice of these meetings. We want those in attendance to know that copies of the Open Meetings Act are available at the entrance to the boardroom. If anyone in attendance is interested in addressing our board, you are welcome to do so. We simply request that you complete the appropriate form and turn it in to us so that you may be recognized during the request to address the board part of our meeting. If you have not already completed the form, please see the staff person outside the entrance to this room. Public comment is welcome. We do ask that no signs be brought into the boardroom. Mrs. Dibbert, would you please call the roll?
Mr. McFarland.
Present.
Mr. Hawley.
Here.
Mr. Garcia Mendez.
Present.
Mrs. Albers.
Here.
Mr. Sykes.
Here.
Mr. Barsnas.
Yes.
Mrs. Douglas.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Goodman.
Here. Okay, on to the consent agenda. First item tonight is consent agenda. Consent agenda is to be approved as follows for items number 3.1 to 3.9. Would anyone like to remove any items or add any items to the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion at this time to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second by Ms. Albers. Sorry. Request to address the board. Oh, we need to vote on it. I'm sorry. I'm off. Okay. All in favor? You may vote at this time. Motion passes. Sorry about that, folks. I'm off my game tonight. Okay. Request to address the board. Seeing none. Information items. Item number 5.1, CEP, Community Eligibility Provisions for the 2024-2025 School Year. Mr. Harden.
Well, we have an attachment that just got there late, so I'm gonna also hand out that very exciting legal size. Lots of numbers, that way you can look at it, maybe write some notes. Choose. It is. That did not make. Yep, hopefully, here it is. Not in my .8 font, not like normal. You're welcome. So, the title of the information item is CEP. This is probably more of a what's the condition of the Nutrition Services Fund. And so, this is the last three full years with then a projected where we'll end the 24-25. Obviously, we have the numbers from September through May, and July and August are yet to be experienced in full. So, don't wanna go over every one of these numbers, but I kinda just wanna walk you through, take you back to just COVID-ending 21-22 school year. You can see that we started the year with 1.9 million. We had 7.4 million. We're just short of that coming as revenue, six point, just under 6.4 expenses, and so we increased our cash balance by almost a million dollars that year, kinda thing. And so, really, what drove that, in my opinion, is the kind of ending of the COVID support that they gave. You might remember that we didn't have a lot of staff working, and we were handing meals out at the curb and all that business. So, there was a lot of federal funding supporting and lifting up the Nutrition Services Fund. So then, we get to the 22-23, started off with just under 3 million, had 7.2 million come in, so a little less revenue than the prior year, kinda thing, and then just under $7 million worth of expenses. So quite a bit of a jump in expenditures that year. And so, we, even though we had an increase in expenditures, the revenue was quite a bit higher, and so, we ended up taking our cash balance to 3.0, just under 3.2 million, or adding another $237,000 to the balance. So, carrying over then to the second set of green columns, the 23-24, the last full year that we have information for, we started off at just under 3.2 million, 6.4 in revenue, 7.7 in expenditure. So you can see quite a jump in the expenditure side of things, mostly on the payroll side of things. If you look, a 21.38% increase on employee, or just salaries, we'll say, and then a 13.62% increase on employee benefits, and then another substantial because of the volume of dollars involved, a 5 point, just under 5.6% increase in food. And so, we burned through, if you wanna use that term, 1.2 million dollars of our cash reserve. As you see, we ended it, started at 3.2, ended at just under 2 million, so it's about basically 1 and 1/4 million dollar difference, so. Now, part of that was in response to the Nebraska Department of Education sending us a letter saying, you've got too much money, you gotta spend that money down. So one of the things that you'll see and notice on the 23-24 column, under the 800 expenditure category, debt, dues, fees, and miscellaneous, that jumped up from the year prior quite a bit because we paid our debt off in full that year. And that was purposeful, kinda thing. And so then, that debt's totally paid off. We have no debt, so that's good news. No debt in the Nutrition Services Fund. And so, we then started this school year at 1.9 million dollars in the fund and projected. So the amounts that are to the far right that say estimated amounts are included in the dollar amounts in the amount column in the red set of columns. They haven't been experienced yet. We haven't received that $20,000 in interest. We pool our cash balance into one set of accounts, and then I allocate the interest income at the end of the year. And so, that just hasn't been posted to that fund. But even though we went through 1.2 million dollars worth of that cash, I still think we'll be really close to $20,000 in revenue on the interest side. There's some additional revenue coming in from the summer food program that's just, you know, a few days, a few days away from ending. So, there'll be money coming in there, and then there'll be some miscellaneous money coming in, some rebates, some refunds, some just end-of-the-year business type thing. So we'll have an increase of about 3.6% in our revenue. The other thing to notice is that you'll see in the sale of meals, the second revenue column, 1611, on the far left-hand side, and carry it all the way across, a 72% reduction. Well, that would be totally within line with our change in moving to the CEP program. So, all meals were provided free, so the revenue that's there is mostly just staff meals, adult meals, that of course, we don't provide for free. It's only for the children that we provide meals for free. So, that's within line of what we thought and what we'd expect. And so then, there was a corresponding increase, very healthy increase, of 16.7% in the state reimbursement and 13.65% in the federal reimbursement. So, if you look at the revenue from the year prior and what we expect to end with, an increase in revenue going through and being part of the CEP program. So the CEP program and the revenue side of things, I think we're working good. I think it's, I think it's taking care of the revenue. It replaced the lost revenue that we would've had from paid. So, we moved it from individual families paying the bill, everybody getting free, to in essence, the federal government and the state reimbursement paying us the money. So, I don't see CEP as a financial burden on the district. The problem we have in front of us is a structural imbalance in the cost of providing the meals, on mainly food. If you look at the food category, you can see a large increase there, and to some extent still and continuing then, our salaries and benefits. And it's a part of the operating environment that we find ourselves in. I don't think there's any one thing that we can do to fix it. There's certainly things we can do to fix it that were within our ability, but, and Oscar will talk more about that, but the fundamental problem we have with the sustainability of the fund at this point in time is the cost of food primarily, and then salaries and benefits. So it's an expenditure problem, not a revenue or not a CEP program issue. So, is that numbers and that story and the information that I've shared make sense to you? What top-of-mind questions do you have as you think about the finances of where we're at with the fund, where we've been, where we're at, and where we think we're going?
Ms. Albers.
So just to track with this, even if we went back to having people pay for meals, the expenditures are gonna be the same. We're still gonna have the staff, we're still gonna have the food costs. So, what I'm hearing you say is, it's gonna be okay, that we can keep CEP, and it's not, it's not making you nervous, no, this is gonna be fine, 'cause, I mean, I think this was an important program. I mean, we were all pretty excited about this.
Yeah. Yeah, on the revenue side of things, I think we made the right decision because I actually think the revenue went up this year as much as it did because of the CEP reimbursement. Now, is it perfect? Is it dollar-for-dollar? No. I mean, some of the schools are being, I mean, and Oscar can get into nuances with that, but absolutely, without any hesitation, I'm telling you, on the revenue side of the equation of the Nutrition Services Fund, I have zero concerns with having gone to the CEP program. All the revenue that we lost from the paid was more than reimbursed to us by what the federal government and the state reimbursed us. So it was, I would actually say it was probably, we'll say, 1% to 2% more than what we would have if we stayed with pay, would be my estimation. That's at best an estimation at this point in time because we haven't finished the year. So, you know, there's no, obviously, there's no absolute way that I can, you know, quantify that with any numbers. That's a heuristic-type thing based on my experience, what I've seen here. So, the issue is the structural imbalance on the expenditure side of two categories, food and our staffing. Both of those, food most of all, is totally, I shouldn't say totally because you can decide what to buy and how much to buy and how you manage it, and again, Oscar will talk to that. But, you know, if you think about your food bill at home, and think about, get this number, 10,000 meals a day every school day. 167 times 10,000 is how many meals. So think about you trying to buy the food for your household to produce 10,000 meals a day. That's how much exponentially the cost and impact of increased cost of food is to the school to run the program. So, we have to obviously make some hard decisions and management decisions, and so the warning or the concern that I wanna bring to you on the financial side of, while we certainly don't need to move any money or help the fund in any way, at this point in time, a year from now, we may have to, and we would have to do that even if we didn't, even if we had full pay. And it could actually be worse if we did full pay versus CEP. So I don't know how to say it any other way than that. Obviously, we will do everything within our administrative power to try to minimize any potential transfer that would be needed and to get us back in the black as fast as possible. It will not happen within one year. You can't, you can see, we made big, I mean, it's kinda weird. The best way I can say it is, we did better at losing less money this year than we did last year. So that, no one wants to talk about that conversation, right? That's not the kinda conversation we wanna have. But if these numbers hold, I mean, to some extent, we did $300,000 better. So if it is, all we can do is 300,000 better, it's gonna take us three years to get out of this current situation that we're in. I'm not sure that it'll take us three, I'm hoping no less than two. It won't be one. So I wanna make sure that we're clear about that. I just don't think there's any way, I mean, I would be shocked if we can get it done in one year, just because there's some things we've already locked into that we can't just wa, we have to honor the commitments we've made already, and then we'd need to let those go and re-go to a lower cost of doing business. So, other questions? Great question.
Mr. Hawley.
Are there any indications of a higher reimbursement rate based on food prices increasing? I mean, it's not.
Great question. I was bemoaning the fact of that situation to Oscar in my office this afternoon, and, you know, the reimbursement rate goes up at the rate the government wants it to go up and not in conjunction with the cost of doing business. There was no connection there at all. So, you know, if you got an in with somebody in the federal government or the state, let them know that we depreciate their reimbursement matching a little closer to what our actual costs are. But you're spot on, that's the crux of the problem, along with other decisions we can make to operate as efficiently as possible.
Mr. Garcia Mendez.
Do you know what the participation rate is, or how?
I don't, but I have somebody in the room that does, so once you go outside of the finance stuff, I can't help you. Oscar will be happy to present you with information, and he's got that covered.
Thank you.
I'm just not the guy to answer the question.
Ms. Albers.
And the reimbursement rate just recently went down. Wasn't it like 1.4 and it went to 1.2?
I don't get into the weeds of the details of that. Oscar's gonna be the guy that.
You kinda love that stuff.
Yeah, well, I do, but I, there's so many other things that he's the expert in that, so I let him be the expert. I don't wanna give you bad information. So we're gonna turn this over to Oscar, and he's gonna talk to you about all the programmatic things and the impact and, you know, his vision for where he's at and what he wants to bring to the table as he moves forward. Thank you.
Well, I don't know if I should start with what I wanna say or try to answer Lisa's question first. Okay, so what was your question? Can you repeat your question again, please?
Didn't reimbursement, reimbursement went down? They, weren't they reimbursing at like, I don't know, 1.4 and it went to 1.2 or something?
No, what, what it is, is that the differences in reimbursement depends on how you're charging the meal. So for our full-paid students, if we were to ditch CEP and go to full pay, our reimbursement rate is what we're charging the parent or the student for the meal, plus whatever the federal government gives us back, which equates to about 81 cents. So if a high school meal costs $3.20, then you add the 81 cents that the federal government gives you, that's our total money that we've made for that meal we serve. Now, when you talk about free meals that we're giving, or that we're, when we're full CEP, our federal reimbursement rate is a lot higher, it's about 4.85. So reimbursement rate, when we're full CEP, we're making on average 81 cents more per meal for lunch, and then for breakfast, we're making about 45 cents more per breakfast on reimbursements. Because, and if, and if some way we can match those prices parallel, it would be the families that would have to eat the cost, but the NDE gives me, has strict guidelines on how much I can raise meal prices at any given time. So even if I wanted to, let's say, raise it to $5 a meal, it's not within my power or authority to do so. Okay. I wanna plug in.
I think it's on the other side. You wanna do that right there. There you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
So what I wanna present is twofold. I know there's gonna be questions about, more about reimbursement and how CEP's working, but the first thing I wanna talk about is the impact that it's had. So since we've started, it's loading, one sec. So this is my report on how CEP's gone. Since we've started operating CEP, we've served around 80,000 more meals this last school year than the previous school year. There's something I want the board to take into account is that our attendance enrollment, our enrollment went down this last year from the previous year. So even with slightly lower attendance, we were able to serve 80,000 more meals. Most of that is in lunch, but we're averaging out now, going full CEP, we're seeing more students accessing meals, and so it's about 270 more lunches a day are being taken, and about 222 more breakfasts are being taken. Now add that by 163 school days that we are, 64 that we had last year, so we can see how this quickly adds up. And the good thing about the increased meals is we have a higher reimbursement rate going full CEP, so we can definitely see that it's a win-win. We're feeding more students, and also, we're getting more reimbursement for that. Some of the benefits is every student has access to free breakfast and lunch. It removes the stigma associated with food costs. It provides food security for our students, enhances overall student well-being, and better academic performance and attendance. It's just, matter of fact, hungry kids don't learn. And this is definitely, you know, when I started this, when we started CEP, and I asked ourselves, what was our why? Our why was definitely driven by matters of the heart, and that's to give food access to all the students. I definitely won't try to spin it any other way, because that's where it came from, but after analyzing the reimbursements that we're getting, I mean, it makes sense to continue CEP as well, just with the increased reimbursement. And then on top of that, the added benefit to the district is the general fund doesn't have to pay any unpaid lunch debt that we have at the end of the year, because the way the USDA has the rules written, we are not allowed to have any negative account towards the end of the year. So any meals that wouldn't be paid for by parents or students go negative, because we would never deny them a meal, general fund pays for that. So as of now, the general fund hasn't had to provide any money this year for negative debt. So in total, it's 43,497 more lunches we're being served, so we're averaging now about 600, 6,878 lunches a day. So then our breakfast, we're at, went up 36,000, we're averaging close to 3,000 breakfasts a day. So we definitely, we're seeing the increase. You know, in lunches, it's about 4% increase, and breakfast, it's about 8% increase. And so, you know, I think that's great, because I think one of the most underutilized services that we offer is breakfast. You know, students aren't getting in there to eat a good, healthy, well-rounded breakfast, so now we're seeing more families take advantage of that. And so, like I said, this is our why. Our why is our students, our community, providing food, providing food security, access to it, not having any students be stigmas, you know, of you're free, you're reduced, everyone in the district is free. On top of going, other benefits of going full CEP has been administrative, burdens have been relieved, so to speak. Previously, in other years, we would, we would take applications for those parents who wanted to get free and reduced meals, and so just the amount of time that we're spending, that we were spending going through all the free and reduced applications, we no longer have that, that's freed up a lot of our time and labor as well. So there's plenty of benefits in the going CEP, in staying CEP. Does anyone have any questions?
Is there any limit on how long we can stay on CEP?
Great question. So the way the rule is written, we go our base year, which was last, was this last school year. So it's base plus three years, and then you can apply for a fifth grace year, so it's guaranteed four, possible five. So we have another three more school years on the CEP with this reimbursement rate. After that, we would have to requalify with another base year, and I feel, given the climate that we're in right now, that regardless of where we stand or wanna go with CEP, I don't see us qualifying full CEP again in three, four years from now. Now, obviously, a lot can change, I don't have a crystal ball, but I think that we're gonna lose a lot of our direct certified students. How we qualify for CEP is not application-based on income, it's our directly certified students who get directly certified through federal and state programs, which would be SNAP, Medicaid, TANF, migrant, families in transition, different, different programs qualify. So, given the changes that are gonna be happening, I think a lot of our community's gonna be losing their SNAP benefits potentially in the future and Medicaid, so that'll reduce our ability to qualify. I have ran some numbers and some data, and I feel that at best, we can qualify nine schools in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Garcia Mendez.
Thank you for that information. That was something that I was interested in. It's unfortunate, but one of my questions was, oh God, I forgot it now. It had to do with the percentage of, the percentage increase.
I think you had asked what our percentage of participation was?
Yeah, how far up that went?
I don't, I can't tell you how far it went up, but I can tell you right now, district-wide, our average daily participation is sitting, I feel, I think around 70%, 70, maybe a little higher than 70. There's definitely room for growth. I mean, there's definitely ways we can push that a little more, which is part of the strategic planning we're gonna go into for the future to try to increase our, our participation. But one thing that I would like to note is, I had went to a conference a couple years back, I can't remember what conference it was, but I got to hear national averages like on high school, because high school would be our biggest room for growth, right? As upperclassmen leave to eat lunch. But our average participation at our high school is 50 to 60%, where the national average sits at 30 or 40%. So, we're definitely doing something right in that regard. Not to say there's not more room for growth, but we're definitely above, even, even some districts that have universal free, where our participation is sitting better than other districts.
Yeah, that was my next question was that, well, I guess I don't know if y'all know of any like to-go meals or stuff like that that could be implemented to increase that participation rate?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question a little more?
If there's been any like talk about having meals to go, like for some of those higher-up, like high school kids who, maybe they have open period, but then they could just like pick up their lunch and then head out or whatever, but if, you know, just to get the participation rate up there.
There has been talk, yeah, and, uh, it's been brought up, actually it was brought up, I believe, by, uh, Summer Stevens, Dr. Summer Stevens. And she suggested that we start looking into ways on how we can, uh, implement our more-so like-to-go meals, 'cause there's not a congregate clause like we have in summer feeding where our kids have to eat there, sit there and eat. But, I mean, we can in theory, as long as you're going through the point of sale, get the upperclassmen to grab their meals and leave. So, that's definitely something we'll be looking at in the future.
Mr. Hawley.
You were just talking about summer feeding. Are we reimbursed for summer meals as well?
Yes, and, and, uh, we are reimbursed for summer meals, and that doesn't really have anything to do with our CEP. But, uh, um, it's just basically how many meals we serve. It's a different program, LAX, it's not as much reimbursement. Um, and it mainly has to do with our participation as well. Last summer, we had a twenty-two percent increase in our summer feeding, which was great. This year, we're not looking like we're gonna be hitting that twenty-two percent mark. We started off the year very strong. We were, we were trending in the right direction. And then somewhere in the middle of summer program, everything just really slowed down. But I'm projecting that for summer meals, we're probably gonna bring in close to about seventy-five thousand reimbursement.
Thank you. All right. I don't see any further questions.
So, I'm sorry?
I said I don't see any further questions. Oops, now I do.
Not so much a question, but, uh, thank you for all the information. Uh, I, I did ask Oscar if I could just put him on the spot, and I know some of you probably don't know Oscar like I do. Uh, but just wanna say, one, that seat back there is like church. That's Virgil's seat. So, so just an FYI.
I figured that out.
Uh, but no, just, just, uh, I, I've, I've known Oscar for a long time, and I just wanna say that, uh, I'm very proud of, of what you taking this position and what you're doing, and you seen you be a graduate of, of the district. And, uh, not only the impact that you're having in our fa, in our families and our students through the program that you're serving. You have a great, a great team. Um, the times that you come up here and we ask you critical questions is never gonna be a, a, a personal thing. Uh, we just are here to ask more questions. But, uh, yeah, sit down with Oscar sometime. Uh, he has a, a, a great story. Uh, but I just wanna say that, that I'm very proud for the journey that you've, uh, that, that you've taken. So, thank you for your, for your time, and thank you for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Oscar. Okay, onto item number five point two, staff handbooks. Dr. Carrie Kohler.
Hello, I am presenting the twenty-five, twenty-six certified and classified staff handbooks for the year. Um, the certified handbook had very few updates that were, uh, most were links, updates. Probably the larger ones, there was a, a section about injuries at work that was updated, talking about, um, submitting an accident report. Also, the transfer that we use a request to transfer Google form now that was updated. And mainly links to the negotiated agreement, since it's, the certified staff handbook is tied directly to that negotiated agreement. So, um, not many major ones with a staff, for the certified staff. Classified, um, few more updates. Um, we added pieces back that were previously in there, like the definitions of employment, added back to the classified staff handbook. Um, the evaluation piece explaining that a little more in-depth than it had been in this year's manual. And, um, reminding people to be on time and where their photo ID cards, some of those smaller pieces we added back in. The accidents and safety and, um, completing the reform for the accidents is in there as well. So, more additions to the classified than the certified. Any direct questions about the handbooks?
Seeing none. All right. Onto item five point three, staff training requirements. Dr. Kohler.
This resolution, um, we presented a similar one last year that talks about the required trainings for our staff. I'm back again to, um, there are some updates that I wanted to talk through. The behavioral awareness is the same, and that's once every three years, three years at this point. Um, the dating violence prevention is still the thirty-five minutes, suicide prevention sixty five, sixty minutes. Safe seizure is once every two years. The anti-bullying is twenty-five minutes. People transportation and safety is three hours if you're transporting a student. Bloodborne pathogens, online safety, and sexual misconduct. Those have all been, um, required for the full length in the past, and this year, um, we're adding a test-out option. So, for people who have taken that multiple years in a row, they would be able to test out and not have to watch the video. Any questions about the resolution?
Ms. Albers.
I know it's required, but do they get any continuing ed credit for those?
No, it is, um, we do keep the time during parent-teacher conference time in between when schools dismiss it to and, um, conferences begin as their time to watch it, so that it's a protected time during contract time.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Dr. Kohler. Item number five point four, student handbook. Dr. Summer Stevens.
Good evening. Uh, so, we're gonna have a few of the updates, um, come before you tonight, and then there'll be a, another set of updates that will come in the August board meeting, because in five point five, you're gonna continue to hear about a lot of policies that actually are in the handbook. And so, until we get to the point of approving those, we won't be changing them in the, in the handbook. So, I'm not gonna cover everything specifically tonight. I did, um, have just a few items that I wanted to reference, um, and then I will take questions. One specific piece is, uh, related to the harassment and bullying, um, section that was scheduled to be in this revision. Uh, but we're gonna go ahead and table that and put it with the August revisions, because those are some things you're gonna talk about later tonight. Some things that are actual changes, not just cheer, um, edits or revisions or typos, just different things on that, that front. Uh, in the, in the handbook, we'll be changing the middle school start time, as you will recall, is moving up to seven fifty. So, that is a change in the book, in the wording. Also, with, since we have adopted the Raptor visitor management system, we have had visitor management in place through, um, the use of Google forms, um, and collecting it that way. But now, as we've moved forward with Raptor, it does require, um, people to have an ID or a driver's license. If the person does not have that, it's not, we don't keep them out, uh, but ultimately, they come to the office and we can run through things that way. But we wanted to make sure that parents understood through the handbook that we are gonna ask you for that, uh, when you come in, and visitors, not just parents. Um, also, we added, uh, various things in policy throughout the year, one of which was the safe and drug-free schools, the parental notice. Um, that's policy eighty-five seventy, and that just actually added the alternative nicotine products and the vapor products. It used to just be about, uh, tobacco. Also, want to highlight, I had one more that I thought I would talk about. Um, we did take out the school supply list outside of the handbook. It is on the website. It is available to people, but it's for the elementary and middle school supply list. The high school activity supply list is still in there. I think it probably does need some updating itself, but we are gonna go ahead and, um, leave that section in. But other than that, most of the items, again, are, um, are not substantive changes. But I would take any, and this is again, the first portion. Have about this many next month as well, because they are connected to policies that you're gonna be reviewing on first read tonight, uh, or potentially final read. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. Okay, item five point five, policy. Mr. Matt Fisher.
Okay, um, we do have plenty of policies to cover this evening. Basically, have the policies that, uh, came about because of changes in legislative are really the ones that we're taking a look at tonight. And so, as we go through these, um, there are, as I said, a number of them. Some of them have some pretty substantial changes, some of them not, not too much. First policy, uh, thirteen-ten on non-discrimination. Within this policy, um, one of the things that, uh, the focus, uh, with changing this was, was primarily around military was added as a protective status by the federal government. So, um, we now have wherever we talked about protected statuses, military as well as veteran status, um, has been added to those, those protected. So, throughout this policy, there are a number of places, um, where, maybe this one, eh, yeah. Military or veteran status added in, as I said, in a number of different places as you go through the policy. So, that's, that's really the only proposed change in this policy at this point in time. Again, these are on information, this first read through these. Any questions on that one? Okay, moving on to bullying and harassment, thirteen-eleven. And again, that military or veteran status shows up in several different places here. And, uh, again, the, the recommendation coming from the attorney was that we make those changes in this policy. And then there are a few thes here and there that, uh, we also got rid of when the committee reviewed it. Another item, when we get down here a little ways, um, a couple of years ago, we were required to, uh, put in, um, uh, again, allowing some access for Boy Scouts was what was named specifically at that time. In fact, the bill is called, uh, Boy Scouts of America Bill. Since then, Boy Scouts have changed their name to Scouting America. And so, uh, the access is for scouting America. And, uh, then there was also a place in here where we had the Director of Human Resources, which we, uh, changed here, uh, to Chief of Human Management. So, we need to make that change. And so, as we move through those, I think that's about all that there was that was changed there. Uh, you will notice that the reference now at the bottom is still the Boy Scouts of America Equal Access Act. The act wasn't changed, even though the name of that organization was, so. Questions on that one?
Mr. Hawley.
Uh, just curious, it's, uh, Chief of Human Management. Is it Chief of Human Capital Management? Is that the actual title?
Yes. Oh, yeah, it is. We left the capital out of there. Capital should be in there. All right. And we get to go to capital asset management next. And it's raining. Okay, uh, again, not a big change here, but, uh, in this forty-four seventeen capital asset management, um, the standard, uh, was moved from five thousand up to ten thousand. So, definition of a capital project, uh, used to be defined starting at at least five thousand. Now, it'll be at least ten thousand in order for it to meet the qualifications of this. And I think that was all that was changed in that one. It's just that one number. Questions around that one? Okay. All right, on to forty-four forty-one. Procurement policy for school food authorities. All right, that fits right in with our previous discussion. Now, this was an important change that was made here. Small purchases is no longer the correct terminology. The correct terminology is now simplified acquisition. So, instead of small purchases, we're now gonna have simplified acquisition. And so, in each of those places where that was referred to, that had to be changed. And so, uh, basically, that is all that was done to this policy. I think. Oh, nope, I stand corrected. Down below here, um, veteran-owned is also, uh, one of those requirements that we consider. Along with small minority and women businesses, we also consider veteran-owned businesses in a favorable light. And I think that's it, yeah. Questions around that one? All right, moving right along. Safe driving records, this is an exciting one, 'cause this is a whole new one that we got to add. So, basically, safe driving records, uh, standards for drivers. Uh, this was something that was passed legislatively that we needed to, to put this in place. So, this was the, uh, policy that the attorney developed. And as you look through here, there's, you know, again, it's just about safe driving and the record requirements that we have for, um, those stu, those people who are going to drive students. Obviously, a lot of our driving is done by people that are, are not our employees, but, uh, the, the groups that we use have to meet these same requirements. But anytime we have someone that uses, you know, uh, transports students, we have to, to fit these, these requirements as well. Questions around that one? All right, then, the next one is also a new one, dealing with foster care student transportation. And in effect, um, in situations where we have students in foster care, um, we do have an obligation to provide transportation for those students. We're to, you know, I guess basically figure out with the foster parents, you know, what is the best way for getting those students to and from school? And, uh, the good thing, I guess, about it is we have the obligation to make it work. Um, whatever costs are created by getting those students actually DHHS, will pick up the cost of that transportation. So, in effect, that's what this policy says. Questions around that one? All right. Bullying and harassment in our staff policies, sixty-two fifteen. Okay, this one is one that, uh, we probably may have some, some questions around, because as we went through it with, uh, both the policy committee and then later on, uh, you know, as, uh, Dr. Stevens reviewed, uh, with, uh, L4L committee, some questions did come up. So, um, basically, in this policy, there's some simple things like the, but when we get to this, uh, first paragraph here, there's a statement that's in here. Basically, it shall be the policy of Grand Island Public Schools to prohibit any form of bullying, including harassment or violence on the base of race. And then, what is struck through there, including skin color, hair texture, and protective hairstyles, including braids, locks, twists, tight coils, and curls, cornrows, bantu knots, afros, and head wraps. So, basically, as we discussed this, actually, the discussion started last month when we discussed the, the changes in the dress code policies, the same language was in there. And, and basically, as the policy committee reviewed that last month, kind of had the feeling that we don't want to, you know, didn't necessarily want to specify a whole list of things with the idea that you might leave something out and then where does that fit? And by leaving it more open-ended, felt like, you know, maybe that was a better direction to go. But then the question came up as we, you know, had some discussion around that is, you know, that, that maybe having those things in there really helps provide some guidelines around some of the ways that discrimination might happen because of those different things. So, basically, that was, that was a question that came up and, and, and this phrasing occurs in a number of different places. And so, I think we need to, to figure out how we want to phrase that. And then, as we go through the policies that, that had that phrasing, we would want them to be consistent throughout as far as being the same. So, anyhow, one of the things that I thought, you know, maybe would be, again, somewhere in the middle sort of, of thing would be to, as you look at that, just say, including skin color, hair texture, and protective hairstyles, period. That doesn't necessarily name all of those specific things. I think still leaves it open-ended enough that, you know, I think whatever the, the hairstyle or, you know, what are, are those things that would fit under there, you know, should work. And yet, it still points out some of those different areas. So, thoughts around that? I, you know, I, I guess this is a, an opportunity for the whole board to weigh in on that and then we can take that away and, and build that into our policies as we deal with this phrasing in the, the other policies that we have. Questions, thoughts?
Ms. Albers.
I'm not sure what protective hairstyles are. And I think a lot of people are going to have that same question. And I like how specific this is because then it, it kind of leads you to the next thing. Like, well, if that's something, well, then maybe this is something. I, it gets me to think about what different hairstyles are or if they have a covering on their head, head because it's protecting their hair. I mean, I, I don't know anything about that. So, you, you could do something like including but not limited to, just to, to kind of open up the conversation because it's, nobody's, I, I don't think we're going to have anybody that's really trying to discriminate against somebody because of their hair, but you just don't know if they just don't understand what they're, what it takes to take care of their hair. So, I, I'd like to see it stay, the detailedness of that and then just maybe put in some language that there could be other things too.
Mr. Garcia-Mendez.
I'm kind of on the same wavelength as, as Lisa was mentioning. I guess, for the district's perspective, would it be helpful to have this policy in reference when having conversations with parents or staff if an issue were to be raised, right? Like, the thing, as I'm looking at it, I think it's to the benefit of the district to have some of these listed out because a lot of us don't know what we don't know, right? And it's like listed in policy 1310 and the non-discrimination policy, all of these are listed on there. So, I think it kind of helps, as we were looking at the immunization policy back a couple of weeks ago, right? It was like, oh, it would be helpful that we acknowledge that law enforcement is going to be referred to, right? So, like on that same wavelength, I'm like looking at this as maybe it'd be helpful for the district in order for, to keeping our best interests, right, to have these because not a lot of people know that these are protective statuses, right? So, kind of just looking at it from that perspective. And then another thing that rises for me is like, so why did past boards have this in there? And I'm assuming that there's a reason for that. So, I wa, I'm, I guess I'm curious if anyone at the district or maybe past board members who have been here longer than me, if you could provide that knowledge to us, like, when was this added in there, for what reasons, right? Were there instances, as I'm assuming there, there have been at this district where educators maybe are not knowledgeable about some of this stuff and they might misstep, right? And I think we're human beings and we always do that, right? We don't know what we don't know. So, I think I'm just looking at it from those different lenses from a lot of this.
Mr. Holley.
And if either of you want to speak to his question, I remember when it went in, don't remember exactly what the reason was that it went in. I'm in favor of removing it and I'll tell you why. We spend a lot of time in policy trying to be consistent, right? Everything is, we're taking out the thes so that the policies are referenced the same way. We're saying the board versus the Board of Education or vice versa. Even looking at this, if we're going to cite examples of race, do we need to cite examples of religion, of marital status, of all of these different things? To me, this feels not procedural but supplemental. If we have a supplemental document that were to be in, I don't know if it'd be in the handbook or where it would be, but a supplemental document where we could refer to this if conversations arose, I think that would be beneficial. But to have it in the policy itself, I feel like if you're going to do that, then you need to do that with everything else in there and this policy is going to get really lengthy. So, I'd be in favor of a supplemental document listing out these things, but I, I'm in favor of removing it from the policy.
Mr. Sykes.
I think the thing that crossed my mind was, I'm hoping to have a district that when they look at human beings that are within the district, their physical appearance, whether it is their hair, their skin color, whether they have scarring on their body, that they would not look for any reason that I think about the more general statement that we could possibly make would be something along the lines of basis of race or physical appearance because that would cover if I have scarring on my, because like, an elementary school kid probably can get bullied heavily if they had a bad scar on their face, but it is, I'm not sure if, it's not really a disability, it's not listed. And so, I was looking at where does this list end? And so, I find myself, you know, I, maybe there is a place somewhere where we could offer clarity, clarity to help staff members out to understand some of those things, but when it came to policy, wanting that to be, wanting that to be able to cover any, anything that, that a, that a student probably, it's not within their scope of, I can do something about this and I'm getting bullied over this, you know? Because it would be, you know, a mole on the side of my face. It's not a disability, it's just, that's just the way you, it's the way you are, you know? So, that's where I find myself with that, wanting that to be as general as possible because it was hard for me to find a place where that, those lists would end to provide clarification. When I'm allowed to be general with that statement, that I'm allowed to cover all of that, whether it's in a supplemental document or in another way.
Mr. Barsonas.
So, I remember the changes back in 2016 and then 20, and back in late 2008, 9, 10, the influx that we had in Grand Island with the Sudanese refugee community and more of the Muslim religion, there were some changes in our demographics. And I remember having those discussions of, okay, that's why I remember there were more details just because when it came to the hair, we had more black students that had different hair and different hairstyles and also different coverings about religion. So, I know that's where that came from. Then given this one, a lot of thought too, and, and I am really, I, I, on the policy stand, I could almost go both sides. I see the importance of having details, but then I go into, those cover a lot of race, cultural ethnicity, but then it leaves it open to, okay, but then what is gender and what is other religion? We could get really specific, the li, the list could get very long, right? So, I think doing a general statement would work for me. Also, I feel that probably this policy is so that we are protected and that we are so, we have the responsibility to our students so that they are protected. But I feel that some of these details, I'm wondering, where are we doing the proactive work? If we have a staff member and we've gotten to this policy to deal with it, we failed, right? It's like, so I, I think that's where it's like, I don't know that we want to start from the policy and just have faith that our staff is going to be good staff. What are we doing proactively to actually tackle some of the issues that are going to deal with race? I, one of the examples I, I, I shared when, or small, small group was that, I remember when we did a back to school, this was probably five, a few years ago, and I was a board member and we were handing out bilingual material. And I had staff from different schools push the staff and said, no, we're English only. You know, where would that fall under and how do we? So, there is some other stuff that we need to be kind of proactive on, I think. Living in general, I like the idea in policy, but then I would wonder, it makes me wonder, okay, but what are we doing proactively to deal with some of the stuff that is happening? I mean, you guys are part of a group and have heard about the, in the community as we went through the changes of superintendent, the things that happened. There was a lot of things that were said on social media that fell under race against board members, against superintendents, against teachers. So, there's a lot of things that this policy wouldn't have saved us, right? We need to deal on head on with it. So, I would almost feel like, I like the idea of having a general statement that covers all the cultures, covers all the really bullying and harassment. My question would be, are we tracking and what are the instances in the last six months, year, two years where we've, where staff or superintendent, you've had to deal or administrators have had to deal with bullying and harassment? Did that fall under race? How did we deal with it? Track some of the staff to see where do we need some more proactive conversations? The high school students, I have sold girls, remember, at least I can remember this, the year, they did have a conversation with a teacher about race and prejudice and biases and it was very impactful. So, I mean, there was a lot of proactive. I just feel like this environment right now and unfortunately where we are in Grand Island and how we are very split, this conversations are very touchy and are very hard to have, especially in a public setting or how it's going to be presented out in the news, the social media, just because everything that is going on. So, I would go back to, I like the idea of general bullying and harassment, put a general statement. We could do, I like the idea of having a supplemental that would cover other things. But then also, I would like to see, well, how are we dealing with this on the day-to-day basis as real examples come up? Because it is very easy, I think, right now to say, well, something happened with a student, was it racially, was it a race thing and are we following it under that line or are we kind of saying, well, it really wasn't, right? So, I guess I'm, I'm kind of bringing those two worlds of, I like the policies there to protect the school district. We as board members, we have a responsibility to our students, to our students. That's who we have a responsibility towards. So, how do we then protect them? I think, I don't want to just say, oh, we have a policy, but what are we doing proactively? I, I'm glad that you mentioned like the trainings before, you know, this is the trainings that we're doing, but are we doing, are we doing more? So, sorry, I took a long, long time for that.
Ms. Goodman.
Okay, so I'm obviously newest to the board members. So, I worked on this this afternoon because we got an email about it. So, I was trying to figure out these policies and what I'm seeing is this specific phrase is listed in multiple different policies. So, is it taken out of one or all three?
Well, I think once a determination of how we want that to read is made, I think we would want all of the policies to be the same.
Okay. And then my other thought process in this was, this deals with a lot of stuff that nobody on this board would have any idea about. So, we're not really qualified in a lot of the areas of, of the, whether it's bullying and/or dress code because it seems to be in both policies. My, my son has two very good friends who would fall into this category. So, I asked them about the difference of like a bonnet versus a job or how, I'm not sure how you pronounce that. You know, one that's more religious versus one that's more cultural. And the cultural does usually get called out in class. So, that one is one that teachers would be able to say, you can't wear a bonnet in class or, so that's where I'm thinking we need wordage for that specifically so it's not just religion, but the wordage that we have is too open-ended. Like, like we've said, like we'd have to list literally everything. So, my thought was if we listed, like you say, cultural, religiously, color, but maybe not specifics. That was just my thoughts.
And I think that's really where the policy committee was coming from is, okay, where do we stop?
Yeah, where do you stop?
And if we don't list it is, you know, and leave something out, does that create a, an issue for us later on?
So, taking some of, like these specific words out would then leave it more open-ended?
That would leave it more open-ended, you know? Basically, it would, it wouldn't say any specific, you know, you know, all those things that are listed specifically would still be covered.
Right.
But it would not look like that is an inclusive list. And, and as Lisa said, you know, you could add terminology that would say, you know, could include but not limited to.
Right.
But again, I think when you start listing things, then
We could leave something out.
There is a little bit of a, you know, okay, this was listed, but this wasn't. So, where's that? That kind of leaves you in some limbo too. So, I, you know, I don't know that there's a perfect answer. And, and obviously, as opinions are shared, you know, obviously, there's, there's some difference of opinions and that doesn't surprise me at all. And, you know, I, hopefully, we can come to something that is agreeable to everyone.
Ms. Albers.
A little history, like you were talking about Carlos, so, and I don't know what year this was, but there, they did a little bit of research on referrals to the office and there was a higher tendency for African and African-American girls to be referred to the office. And so, once they kind of dug down into that, I think that's when that communication and kind of that meeting started where some of the girls ended up meeting with some of the administrators and just, you know, clearing the air a little bit and talking a little bit more about their culture. And so, I suspect that's when some of these changes in the policy came, came about.
Mr. Barsonas.
Yeah, no, and I think again, from the policy standpoint, I think this is kind of with the whole registration thing. We're cut, we're, we're getting cut up in the, it came up in the process, this is what we're doing. It just happened to be that we're in this beautiful political environment, right? And it just happened to deal with that. But I think when we're looking into just, okay, let's update the policy, but maybe the homework that we just need to do is kind of like what happened with the students, what are the things that we really need to update? To Donna's point, I think culturally, there are some teachers that are dealing with this more than others. Some of us are dealing with it more than others in different areas. So, I think maybe even just getting a feel for what are the top things that we're dealing with? So, maybe it's not the hairstyles anymore, but it's something else. Again, policy stand, I think we can make it as, such as this examples, it's there. But it brings up the question for me, is there anything that we should be concerned that is really happening or, you know, this just happened to be a policy that we're updating? We can do some homework for the future.
Mr. Garcia-Mendez.
Yeah, no, I like that and thanks for bringing that up, Tracy. I think it's, you have connections to like students, you know, and like you, and, and I like how maybe we just need to like, reach out and be like, yeah, what are those instances of, you know, hate incidents or anything like that that's occurring? Just from like a work perspective, my work is getting, is connected across the state of Nebraska and, and we've heard instances of hate incidents occurring more increased. I say this year, unfortunately. I would like to think that, you know, like we were moving away I would like to think that, you know, like we were moving away from that, but unfortunately we've been hearing instances even at like summer schools and, and some school districts across the state. Also here within the town of G.I. and, and people screaming out racial slurs to people while they're driving. And even my mother experiencing some hate incidents in her workplace here in Grand Island. And so I just, coming from that lens of hearing this day in and day out, I feel like it would cause just abruptly more harm, making this more general when we're experiencing more of these incidents in our community. And that's just sharing my own perspective and my own experience of what my family's going through, what people in my community are going through in our community, right? All across the state of Nebraska, and I don't think it's isolated to just this state, right? I think it's just this nation in general. And I think, yeah, we would, we, we have been on the trajectory of making our policy really generalized, but I, I just considering the conditions right now of what's occurring in the communities that we live in, I think it just causes more harm. I do like the addition of adding, that include but are not excluded to, right? And I think a lot of this, I think back to like what Mr. Holly was mentioning about like religion, right? I think we could all know when someone's discriminating on our religion, right? Cause it's pretty generalized and pretty known in our community. Or if it's disability, right? Someone saying something about someone who has a leg missing or has a wheelchair, right? Like we know that's a disability, right? But a lot of times I think are just, our community in general isn't really educated on that race aspect, right? Because they're tough conversations, they're really tough conversations to be had. And something that we just need to be had more of, right? But yeah, I don't know, those are just kinda like some of my thoughts, but yeah.
Mr. Holly?
Mr. Fisher, when we decided to visit this policy this month, it was based off of changes to the Nebraska law, correct?
Well, yeah, and, and as you look through this, this, this is another one of these that has the military and veteran status in it. So we're looking at that policy really because of that. The reason we're looking at this phrasing actually goes back to last month's when we looked at the, the dress code policy. And, and really, at that time, we had that same discussion around, okay, do we want this to be more general or do we wanna leave these specifics in?
And, and I think I was absent for that meeting, but I, I remember these conversations. And the reason I ask is because if, if you read our policy, it says, including harassment and violence based on race, color, religion, national origin, ethnicity, military and veteran status, age, sex and gender, sexual orientation, disability, marital status. If you go out and just do a simple Google search, which might not be up to date, right? For the state of Nebraska, because it doesn't reflect military and veteran status. It says, race, color, religion, sex, including gender identity, sexual orientation and pregnancy, national origin, age forty and over, disability and genetic, genetic information. Does it serve us better, like we do with many other policies, to go and cite what the law says and put it in here and just leave it at that? And I'm, I'm going back to what I said originally, I'm not trying to harp on that. Just in the comparison of the two, if we're doing this based off of the changes to the Nebraska law, perhaps we just reference what the law states and then again, go with a supplemental document for some of these other things.
Well, that would certainly be a direction. And, and obviously we're, this is an information item tonight. And, you know, as we look ahead at the dress code policy, which actually is on action tonight, I'm gonna recommend that we table that until we have a clear direction on this. But I, I mean, I think where we're at right now is, you know, we need to make sure that we take the information that was shared tonight. As Carlos suggested, maybe do a little more research around it. Maybe look at the, you know, the, the laws a little more closely and then come back, you know, when this is a, an action item next month, wherever it fits and any of the policies and, and come, have the policy committee come with a recommendation. Obviously the, the board can still discuss it at that point in time and modify it. But I, I mean, I think, I think we got what we needed out of tonight as we had an opportunity for the board to discuss it and provide input to the policy committee. And, and certainly would encourage, you know, any board members that have other thoughts around that to talk to the policy committee members or myself and, and make sure that, you know, we, we wanna put a policy in place that's reflective of the board's wishes. And that's what the policy committee really wants to bring to the board. And so that hopefully there's a, at least enough approval to pass the policy. But really we'd like to have, have it reflective of where the board really wants to be. So. Uh, there's questions or thoughts around that? Okay, so that's, that's basically, as I said, other than that, the rest of what's in here that, you know, had changes were that military and veteran status being added in several different places. And so then we will go back to the drawing board and figure out where we're gonna go with the, the statement on, in terms of hairstyles. Okay, drug free schools. Free school and community sixty-two thirty-three. And let's see, what do we have in this one? I don't think there was a whole lot here. Actually, I don't think there's anything. Wow. That doesn't seem right.
We're striking out the procedures.
Yeah, there we go, there we go, there we go. There's a whole bunch of stuff. So, yeah. Again, this was, this was what the attorney presented that we, we should make in terms of changes to this policy, striking that information that was there and replacing it. I believe it gets replaced, maybe it just gets struck. Uh, down at the bottom here, yeah, we do get some, get some additional language here at the... Uh, no, we don't either. Oh, there we go. Getting rid of all that, that stuff and replacing it with the new policy that the, uh... No? Still haven't got there. So we strike all of that one section and we keep the others, that's right. And we, and this, this really was all the attorney did was get rid of the one section and then they added these requirements for personnel, personnel information collected and maintained under the, this part. So again, just if, you know, I have a situation where they have to have a drug test, then these are the procedural parts of this that was modified here. Questions on that one? That was an easy one, once we found it all. All right, programs for gifted learners. And this is one that we're striking a part of this and replacing it with another part. Basically, we're striking a, a number of things there as far as that second paragraph being struck. And then the last part of it being struck and, and then new language going in place as far as developing and implementing such criteria to identify high ability learners. Again, this is a language that was direct from the attorney. Questions there? All right. Admission of resident students, policy eighty-two twenty. Couple of things here, this part in terms of enrollment of expelled students. This actually was language that we had in another policy. Actually, it was in a policy about age. And it really doesn't have anything to do with age, it really has more to do with admission. Basically, it's a statement that says that if a, a student is expelled from another school district, they cannot enroll until the, the time of that expulsion at the other district has concluded. And again, this is not new language, this is just a move from one policy to, to this policy. What is the new language is this language around military families. Basically, the, this came from the legislature, the intent being that it, making it easier for families that might be in the military that are moved into a district that has a, a military facility, to allow those students to enroll right away rather than actually having moved into the district. Questions on that one? All right, part-time enrollment. This is kind of an interesting one. As we get down here a little ways. There's some language that legislature caused us to need to put in place. And that is non-resident students may only be admitted on a part-time basis or permitted to participate in a school-sponsored extracurricular activities when required by law. That was the statement the attorney gave us to put into our policy. Basically, what the law says now is that a student who is not enrolled in a public school, homeschool student, a student in a private school, if they are in a district that the public school does not offer an activity, then that student can actually request that they be admitted on a part-time basis to another district, not their home district, to participate. So for instance, you know, if a student at Wood River decided they wanted to play baseball, we weren't co-opping baseball with Wood River at the time. They, and this would be a student that's not enrolled at Wood River, but living in the Wood River district, could come to us and say, I want to enroll on a part-time basis and participate in baseball because they don't offer that in my home district. Now, a public school student could not do that, but a homeschool student or, or student, you know, in a private institution could. And so, you know, that's the law. And that's what the, the policy says is that we would be, follow the law. Basically, in that situation, we would have our attorney review it and he would tell us, yes, you need to admit this student or no, you know, here's something that, that is outside of the law. Anyhow, that's, that's where that comes from. A good change that the, the legislature did make is the statement that's later on there. Any student covered by this subsection must enroll in five credit hours through the district in, it used to say any semester. It now says in the semester in which the student participates in an extracurricular activity. So if they are gonna participate in, you know, whatever it happens to be, track for instance, they would have to be enrolled in the five credit hours during that spring semester that they'd be participating in track rather than just any semester. So I think that's probably a good change. I believe that is all that was changed in this one. Questions around that? All right.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
So that policy was kind of an over legislation for an experience of one student. And I think it was in Merman's district and she was homeschooled. She wanted to wrestle, it wasn't offered in her home district. And then she couldn't opt in to the other district. And so I know of one person this happened to. I mean, it was disappointing for her and I think now she was able to wrestle. She missed one year and was gonna be able to wrestle like the next year, but it's not happening a lot. So it's an infrequent occasion.
And again, that's over legislated maybe is a good word there. Fix, something you can fix with a tack hammer with a sledgehammer instead. All right, parental access. This actually goes back to the hearing that we had earlier. This is the policy that...
Go back to eighty-four fifty.
I don't want to, I want it to be done. Let's just be done. All right, all right, eighty-four fifty, student discipline. Okay. Well, the student discipline policy, again, is one that the legislature dealt with fairly extensively. You know, we have some things early on like the "the", but then when you get down into the, the real meat of this one, there were several things that the legislature mandated that, that be a part of our discipline policy. And, and you know, the attorney put out a whole new discipline policy. And, and actually, our discipline policy is structured quite a bit differently than the attorney's. But I think there's a lot of good things in ours in terms of, you know, it, it does have a, a metric for, you know, that really I think is very beneficial to our administrators in terms of helping them to, to know, you know, how to, to treat different discipline situations. So rather than going with the attorney's policy, what we did here is tried to build the things that were mandated and updated in the, the policy that the, the attorney had into our existing policy. So one of the things that obviously student dress code was, was one of the areas that they, they dealt with fairly extensively, actually a year ago. And so now that has to go into our policies this year. And so this statement, no student shall be disproportionately affected by a dress code or grooming policy enforcement because of the student's gender, race, color, religion, disability, or national origin. So again, that was a, a statement that we were required to, to include in our discipline policy. And then a little further on here, there is a reference to deep fakes. And this is where it felt like it, it fit, you know, obscene, lewd, public indecent behavior, including deep fakes or other computer generated images. The thought was there that, you know, there've been situations where there were deep fakes, images created of, you know, that were obviously obscene images that were not real images, they were deep fakes. And so there was a question about whether students could be disciplined in, you know, the same way they would if it was an actual image. And so that's, that's why that was added. And I believe that was it in terms of what we needed to add to this one. Yes. Questions on those? All right, I suppose you think we need to do the rest of these too, huh? Before we go to that next one? Participation in extracurricular activities. You probably all heard about the... Again? All right, this is a whole new one. This is, again, this behavioral intervention and classroom management. This was a policy that legislatures mandated that we have. I think the good thing for us is, is that all of the things that are really included in this when you get down to this chart, you know, basically a positive behavior plan is really what this is and that is what we've already had in place. And so when we talk about those tier one, tier two and tier three supports, that's the process that we've already been using. So there really isn't a big change for us, we just haven't had it in policy because it's really more of a practice than a policy until the legislators mandate that it's a policy. So now it's a policy. So. Questions around that one? All right, now, participation in extracurricular activities. And this goes back to the discussion that the legislators had. You might remember the sports and spaces discussion that they had. And in the end, it ended up just basically being focused on sports. And the statement that the attorney has advised that we need to put in our policy is simply that statement in red there. The superintendent or designee shall, as required by law, designate each school-sponsored interscholastic athletic team or sport as either boys, girls, or mixed. So we will now designate all of our activities. So, we will now designate all of our activities as boys, girls, or mixed. Questions? All right. Finally. Parental access. As I said, this was what we actually had the hearing on earlier tonight, and the legislature did spend quite a bit of time with this one, and as a result, basically, what we had in place before, the proposal is to strike that, replace it with the attorney's language, and, you know, the attorney's language basically spells out, as legislators have mandated, just the different access that parents would have. That first paragraph, as you look at that, that's really a, an opportunity for parents to comment on different educational materials that would be used in, in the classroom or in trainings. The second statement there does, basically, you know, says that a reasonable request from a parent or guardian to attend a class or an assembly or so on, you know, we're required to allow that to happen, as long as it doesn't disrupt the educational process. The third statement there deals with child to be excused from testing, classroom instruction, learning material, activities, guest speaker events, and other. So, basically, we have to have a form that allows parents to request that. The fourth one deals with access to student records. Basically, we need to allow them to have access to student records, which certainly is something we've always done. And then, the fifth one is notifying parents, guardians, or educational decision-makers when we're going to do standard norm reference or criterion reference testing, and give them an opportunity to review sample tests and so on. The sixth one deals with surveys, and again, notifying parents and giving them the opportunity to opt out when their, their children are going to be surveyed. And, and basically, the last one is, is kind of a generalized statement that substantive decision-making processes will be left to the judgment of the professional staff administration and the Board of Education, which is kind of a good statement to have at the end, that says, basically, the educational process is still gonna be driven by those people. The parents have the right around those specifics that were named. Questions on that? There's some more material that's listed down here. There's actually a Title I, Parent and Family Member Engagement, which is policy ninety-one ten point one, it's attached to this ninety-one ten. It deals specifically with Title I. Again, that's federal policy there. And then, there is a, a request form that we already had that actually still, I believe, meets the requirements of what was laid out in the new form. So, it's a simple request form, basically, what is it, do you object to? Why do you find it objectionable? And what, you know, what potential solutions to this situation would you propose? So, that gives them an opportunity to put their ideas forward, and then, the school would have the obligation to respond to that. Questions around that?
Not a question, just a suggestion on the Spanish. It's just a minor grammatical on the Spanish version. The second question, just change, we need to take the S out of the fourth word, so everything is in the formal asking. The other two are informal, and one of them is an informal way of asking. So, right at the, the middle question that says...
Question?
The short one. Porque lo encuentra desagradable? On the fourth word, there's the S, take the S out, and then, all the questions are informal form.
Did you get that, Angela? Okay. All right. Cross an S out. I like that one. That's simple. Any questions on any, any of those? All right. Thankfully, we're done. Okay, now, we're on to action items. Item number six point one, extra standard. Dr. Kohler?
The extra standard I presented the last meeting in information, and it had updated activity names, changing vocal music to show choir, FBLA to DECA, and then adding positions at senior high, as well as middle school speech, mainly assistant coach positions. Any questions about the extra standards?
This time, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the extra standard schedule as presented.
Second by Ms. Albers. Discussion. Seeing none, proceed to a vote. Motion passes. Six point two, staff handbooks.
Any questions on the staff handbooks I presented earlier?
I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the classified and certified handbooks as presented.
Second by Ms. Albers. Discussion. Seeing none, we proceed to a vote. Item number six point three, staff training requirements.
Any questions on the staff training or the resolution?
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the approved staff training requirements resolution as read.
Second by Ms. Albers. Discussion. Seeing none, may proceed to a vote.
Okay.
Item six point four, student handbook. Dr. Stevens?
Thank you. So, tonight, again, asking for the changes that were listed in the packet with, again, tabling the component around the student dress and appearance until the next meeting.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six student handbook as presented.
Second by Ms. Albers. Discussion. Seeing none, may proceed to a vote. Item six point five, six-four-six-one, reduction in force. Mr. Matt Fisher.
Didn't seem like much of a break.
Good thing is, we did have several of the policies that we would normally be going through that were approved in the consent agenda, so kudos to the Governance Committee for making that recommendation and allowing us to not have to look at the, those multiple times. Okay, so, policy sixty-four-six-one, reduction in force. Just a quick review of this before we vote on it. Dr. Kohler actually did a lot of work in terms of looking at other districts' policies around reduction in force, and worked closely with GIEA in making sure that the, the changes were agreeable. And so, again, I think it's, it's, there's quite a bit of red in here, but I think it's all pretty straightforward stuff in terms of delineating, you know, what the considerations would be when we're making decisions around which positions and which employees would, would fit into the, the RIF situation. Hopefully, that's something we don't have to deal with very often, but probably having an updated policy is a good thing for us. Questions around this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve policy sixty-four-six-one, reduction in force as presented.
Second by Ms. Albers. Discussion. Seeing none, may proceed to a vote. Motion passes. Okay, policy eighty-four-thirty on student dress and grooming. This is the policy that I'm going to encourage the board to act to table, and we will bring it back when we have a definitive direction around that statement. Okay, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to table.
I make a motion to table policy eighty-four-thirty, student appearance to a later date.
Second by Ms. Albers. Discussion. Mr. Sykes?
I just had a quick question, just with how much comment people had on that, if it would be a benefit to the district and the board to do anything more public with that in the, in the future. I agree with tabling it. I just, you know, so that they could, they could hear, and like Eric, like they would, the public would hear your, your heart and where you're going with that. And so, I, you know, I, I didn't know what to do with that being newer to the board, and I know that we do a lot of work with that within Policy Committee, and I don't know how many people read those notes, and, you know, if it's gonna be something, it's gonna be... I just wanted to throw that out there, if it's gonna be something, it's gonna be touchy, if there's any benefit to that or not, so.
Oh, okay, so just, um, sorry, I don't know. You have to call my last name. Um, yeah, no, I think the more of these discussions that we could have in, in the public are to the benefit of the district. I'm really appreciative that the district has kind of moved some of the policy, the other approvals of the student handbook to next month, because I feel like, I was also asking Lisa, I was like, is there an issue with us passing the student handbook while we're still modifying policy that's referred to in the handbook? Like, for me, like, maybe that's not, like, it just doesn't jive, vibe well with me, you know, like, us passing a handbook and then modifying, like, policy right around the same time? Like, I guess it's just, like, I, I just wish that we could be more, and I know we're stretched thin, everyone is nowadays, especially with funding concerns, and, yeah, I guess it's just, like, the more of this that we can have in public, the better, right? Because I think we always preach transparency, and that's one of the, the factors that's aligned with this, right? I, I was curious of, there was a strike through that says, strike through through specific to policy eighty-four-fifty-five. I guess I was curious why, why that was striked. I know it was, it looked like it was part of the edits, but then it was striked. Yeah, I just had a question on that.
Do we wanna go back to eighty-four-fifty-five, or do you wanna vote on the motion that's on the floor?
I'm just referring to eighty-four-thirty, right? We're on that right now?
Right.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Okay. I was just curious why that needed to be striked through, you know?
Which I think that we could have paused.
Okay. 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 Okay, okay.
Oh, yeah.
All right, okay.
Why appearance was...
We'll, we'll look at it. We'll look at it. Okay. We'll look at it.
And again, we've tabled it, that one will come back, and, and we'll, we'll have that cleaned up, and, you know, again, I, and I would, you know, I think that I have the opportunity to have some discussion around this, you know, it was certainly very healthy for us. Unfortunately, with the long session of the legislation, we didn't get the policies from the attorney in time to do policies in July, or in June. And so, now, we're up against, well, we need to get the student handbook done. So, I think that's, obviously, what Dr. Stevens is trying to do, is she's trying to get the student handbook as, as far done as it can be, you know, because August meeting is right when school is starting, so, but you're right, I mean, when we're dealing with policies that we're changing potentially, it's pretty hard to put them into the student handbook and not have them, you know, fully approved by the board yet. So, I, you know, that's, it's kind of a balancing act that we're in right now, so.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that. I, I think this is just a good reminder, for those might be watching or as we read, that there's a lot of work that goes into all of that, right? So, that, that, we're not just having this conversation today for, like, the public and people that might be interested, okay, what is happening? There is a committee, I mean, Josh bringing that up and saying, we could have more work, and administrators going and putting in the balancing act that you're talking about. So, once again, I just wanted to make sure that people know there's always a back and forth and a lot of research that goes into this.
Okay. Do we need, do we need to, did we vote on tabling?
No.
No, we didn't get there.
We proceed to vote on this one. The eighty-five eleven.
Eighty-five-eleven, okay. No.
No, we need to vote on table on eighty-four thirty.
We need to vote on, on tabling eighty-four-thirty, so I'd entertain a motion regarding tabling eighty-four thirty.
I think you had a motion already.
Discussion, any further? May proceed to a vote. Motion passes. Okay, eighty-five-eleven, physical examinations and immunization for students. This was, again, another one of these policies that we've got to have a, you know, some good public dialogue around, which I think has been a good thing. Ultimately, where we're at right now, the changes that we had discussed last month, you know, as far as striking issued by the state in which the child was born, we, we felt like it's striking that was appropriate, because we do have a number of students that weren't born in any state, they were born in another country. And then, just adding that language, if a birth certificate is unavailable, other reliable proof of the child's identity, and then, the statement around, you know, failure to provide the birth certificate does not result in non-enrollment or disenrollment. However, state statute does require the school district to refer the matter to local law enforcement for investigation. That policy, or that language, I think we had in place last time, but then, the, the situation that we ran into was, is there was some contradictory language towards the end of this policy. All right. Now, where's that at?
It should've been the last paragraph before the physical examinations and immunization.
It is that statement, "A student who fails to meet the foregoing requirements shall not be permitted to enroll in the inner school or is previously enrolled or enrolled without compliance shall be permitted to continue in school." But, it appears that the change that we made did not get put in there, but we can make that change and approve it as, in a changed format. So, basically, the, the change that was made is a student who fails to meet the foregoing requirements for vaccinations, because that, that's where it is. It's only the vaccinations that would cause that student to not be permitted to enroll or to enter school, or if provisionally enrolled, which we can at times provisionally enroll them, they would have to, to be unenrolled at that point in time. So, it, really, the, the language in there would just be requirements around the vaccinations, the required vaccinations. So, that would be, you know, so the board can choose to approve this, not as presented, but as modified. Have a dinner.
So, I make a motion to approve policy eighty-five-eleven, physical examination and immunizations for a student as presented and as modified, right?
Correct. Second by Ms. Albers. Discussion. Seeing none, may proceed to vote. Motion passes. All right. Now, this parental access to educational practices that we covered earlier in information is also on here as... in information is also on here as an action item because we have to have this new policy approved prior to August 1st, because it had the E clause on it. And so, again, this is the policy that we just looked at.
I would entertain a motion this time.
I make a motion to approve policy 9110 as presented. That's what I'm saying, as revised, should be as presented, isn't that correct?
Should be as presented.
As presented.
Second by Ms. Albers. Discussion. Seeing none, may proceed to a vote. Motion passes. Okay, on to reports, 7.1, Grand Island Public Schools Foundation Report, Ms. Lisa Albers.
The 2024 Harvest Gala will be held on September 25th, 2025, at Riverside Golf Club, with the presenting sponsor being Tom and Kim Dinsdale. In July, the foundation will announce the recipient of the Miller Legacy Professional Development Grant and two new GIPS Foundation Professional Development Grants to teachers that are furthering their education. 2025 Scholarship Program Statistics were presented to the Grand Island Public Schools Foundation Board. The board acknowledged another, another amazing year of supporting students to fulfill their dream of continuing ed. Teacher of the Year Committee convened and chose the winners that will be celebrated at the 2025-2026 Welcome Back. The foundation will not have a July board meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Albers. On to item 7.2, Superintendent Report.
Okay. All right, one of the things that I did want to mention in my report tonight, Grand Island Senior High is looking at incorporating activities eligibility policy in the coming year. I think probably Mr. Ladwig will come and present some more information. They were ironing out a few, few details still, but the intent is to have an activity policy that would basically say that if a student is failing two or more classes, that they could become ineligible. There's a probationary period, there's, you know, there's a lot of different steps. So again, it's not, the intent is not to make students ineligible, but, you know, we have had situations where we've had students failing multiple classes for multiple weeks and, and really still being able to fully participate. And, and so the administration at the, the high school feels like that's, that's something that they need to, to address. And so they are working around finalizing that policy and having it ready to go for the coming year. So, and just wanted to, to report that out. Along those same lines, earlier this week, I met with the middle school activities directors, as well as representatives, principal representatives from all of the middle schools. And, and we really had two topics primarily that we were discussing, and that was how they, they handle their activities budgets. Mr. Harden came in and discussed the, the budget process with the principals and the A.D.s, and I think had some really good discussion around that budgeting and, and really helping the, you know, we have three new middle school A.D.s this year, this past year. They'll be grizzled veterans this year, they'll have a year of experience under their belt. But, and anyhow, a lot of questions around, you know, how, how much money do I have to spend? And, you know, when it's time to answer a question about, can I, can I buy this or not buy this? And, and so I think we had some really good discussion around their budgets, and I think it was very helpful. And then the other item that we talked about with them was really trying to, to synchronize what we were doing in our middle schools with eligibility. And each of the middle schools had things that were a little bit different in terms of their activity eligibility. And so I think it had some really good dialogue around, you know, making those the same and really trying to, to, to look at the, what the high school's doing and, and really helping to, to, to prepare middle school students by trying to align some of what they were doing with some of the, the same kind of expectations that the high school was including in theirs. So, again, you know, good discussion around that. And so, earlier this week also, we did have our registration day for newcomers program out at CPI. We had a number of community agencies that were on hand that day and, and, you know, really provided a lot of opportunity for those, those immigrant families that are new to our community to come in, get their students registered for school, and then also, you know, interact with those other community agencies. And so I think overall, a really good day with that. Otherwise, you know, we're, we're preparing for our, our lead workshop on the 22nd of July, where we'll have all of our principals and department heads in. And that's usually a, a really kind of a, it's not the, not, certainly by any means, the first thing that we're doing to prepare for school, but it's kind of a culminating day where we get to bring all of the leadership together and, and really talk about getting the, the year off to a good start, do some planning, some self-reflection. So a number of really good things that we get a chance to do with our leadership on that day. So that's, that's coming up. Would want to invite all of you, August 6th, in the afternoon this year. We have our Welcome Back. And so if you're available and can come to the Welcome Back, I know we have a really good speaker lined up to come in, really, I think, a, a great message for our staff to, to kick off the year. And, and of course, we, we do a number of awards and recognitions at that time as well. And so certainly would encourage any of you that are available to, to come and take that, that in. Again, as we did last year, we're going to shoot for a shorter format. It seemed to be well-received last year, and so we're going to go down that road again this year. So, other than that, you know, summer school's wrapped up. We're, we're in our final days, as Oscar alluded to earlier, of our summer lunch program and, and nutrition work that we do during the summer. And next thing you know, the school year will be upon us. So that, I guess, concludes my report. If there's any questions?
Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Oops, I take that back. Notification of upcoming board meetings, regular.